We're live, Nanette.
Thank you. We're missing Janay.
Hello.
Hi, Janay.
How is everyone? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Hi, Janay. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Let's see who we have here. Do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do. In fact, we have all trust, all committee members.
Okay. Awesome. I'm going to call to order the Committee on Internal and External Relations. Nanette, can you do the roll call?
Yes. Janay McDonnell.
Present.
Mary Kate Murin.
Present.
Steve Grande.
Present.
Bill Johnson.
Present.
Betty Spocito.
Present.
And Alexander Anderson.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nanette. We're going to start out with the trustee engagement for the Netchy Self-Study Governance Projections.
So. We're here to kind of dive in a little bit more as it relates to the Netchy accreditation. As you know, the Self-Study is about comparing the accreditation standards from Netchy and looking to see what we do as a college and then how well we do it and in the end make commitments to the future for improvement. And so back in November Suzanne and I both presented a couple of possible projections that we thought might work well for the Board of Trustees. And Dr. Cook directed us to come to this meeting today to just kind of have, be able to open conversation about those projections and answer any questions that you might have, maybe reinforce the reason why we chose some of these projections and then obviously the Board of Trustees has the opportunity to create their own projections as well and their own commitments. The Netchy standards were just updated at the in December and those will take effect immediately. And so some of the changes that will take effect for 2021 and beyond are also a part of some of these projection commitments that we have asked you to consider. So for example, one of the projection commitments that we asked you to consider was about the Board of Trustees self-assessment and finding a tool or an instrument that would allow you to assess the Board of Trustees effectiveness. The change that has been made most recently to that standard was that an external perspective must also be included in that assessment. So as you begin to consider the commitment towards assessing yourselves, to remember that an external perspective needs to be added. Now Suzanne reached out to Netchy, to our liaison because she's the accreditation liaison, and asked the question about what is external perspective? Are you talking about benchmarking with other boards? Are you talking about looking outside of the college? Are you talking about the board getting an external perspective but internal to the institution? And Netchy came back with a really popular response that they give most often, which is it depends. It depends what the college is thinking about. It depends what the college needs. So you get to decide that, what you consider that external perspective. I think there's also an element about periodic review of the CEO and the fact that the periodic review of the CEO of the college is done already. But there's an element in there about making sure that it is done, that there is a comprehensive review done related to the BHE's directive because then, because Netchy kind of looks at or recognizes the BHE's leadership in this as well. And then the last commitment that we spoke of in November was expanding the channels of communication with the college to ensure that there is sustained communication with the campus community. So I guess I'll just park that there and if Suzanne wants to add anything and if anybody has any questions for a conversation. I think the thing we really want to reinforce here is that the Self-Study Report, we have a deadline of February 14th to kind of have this all wrapped up. So we're hoping that by having this conversation this week and then another conversation with the Ways and Means Committee next week, that it will bring the board closer to some commitments during your January 25th meeting.
And I just want to add that I had forwarded a sample governance survey that is used, was used as part of the Standard III Committee's work this past year. And that was sent out to all employees of the college asking questions about what, it was an instrument that was borrowed from York County Community College and then adapted. And they had called it the cornerstones of governance. So it asks about things like strategic planning, the mission, trust, decision-making, and how people perceive their own roles in those things. And so we forwarded that as something to look at in terms of how, you know, this is the first year we've used it, but how currently the administration and the AUC are looking at a tool to gather some external perspectives, at least internal to the college but external to each of their own operations. And so that, the results of that survey, so it's gone out once, there are some findings that are being cited in the Self-Study. But those findings are something that the board could also look at and consider and/or adapt. They could adapt the instrument or use something similar.
Okay. So are we thinking doing an assessment? I know that there have been some other assessment examples or just tools for building an assessment sent to me. And so we're talking about the entire board. Do we want to think about breaking it up by committee participation? How descriptive do we need to get, like attendance-wise?
So just for clarification for the committee, between now and the end of the month, it's not like the trustees have to come forward and have this in hand. It's really, I think the language of course is projection. What would you like the board to project it will do in the future? Right? I think again, just to touch on that, it's not like we're on a deadline to all of a sudden, you know, magically put all this process in place. It, you know, I think, you know, Chris touched on this at the beginning, is we just need to nail down probably what, for, for lack of a better way to say it, three to five commitments, which we'll call projections, that the trustees really do help commit to for its future work, its future contributions to governance.
So there is some sample language in the packet that was sent. And do we think that that satisfies the commitment for trustees self-assessment?
What page?
That is on page. Let me go back.
So the way we wrote that is in direct relation to what Dr. Cook is speaking about. We wrote this in such a way to say that the Board of Trustees will seek to create a plan, not necessarily what plan or not necessarily how it will be done, but just to begin the process of the self-assessment instrument, how you would codify the process, just, just to kind of get those wheels rolling. We put a timeframe of 21, 2021 to 2023, assuming that probably none of this would really, you know, start until September, the next academic year, and then would roll into a whole year process. And, and so the way it's written here, the projection in your packet would definitely support what the accrediting body is asking for.
Okay.
We did emphasize the regularity of these kinds of activities, like a self-assessment, that they purposely eliminated the word periodic and replaced it with regular. So you'd want to say something like, you know, we will do this on an annual basis to reassure them that it's, it's going to happen and that the community can count on it happening.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, right, Janay, I think that to set us up for success, right, is we will need to bring things to the full board. And I think the timing is good with the full board. I think it's the 24th of this month. You know, coming out of, you know, we are going to be planning to do that self-assessment from the board, right? The commitment of doing it internally, the projection of getting an external perspective. And I don't know, we have to identify that, just that we are basically just saying we're going to do that. And then we already, as, was already stated that we also already do the CEO review annually, but we do need to do a five-year. So that's something that needs to, also will need to basically project and commit to that. And then, you know, from another perspective, Janay, you know, is it, is it's maybe an opportunity for the full board to also create a potential facility committee? And that might be an additional channel of communication, right? We put, instead of doing ad-hocs, has come up with everything going on with the college and building 20, it might be another opportunity. Not that it, you know, we have to go on that, but it might be something we, we talk about from a, from a board perspective too.
Right.
And can I update?
Yeah. Sorry.
Nope, it's okay. So I was just going to say, so I noticed that many of the standards that we're talking about, they're sample language, except for the first one in the packet. Or 3.19, is that something that we need to address as well? About shared governance?
That did. So there is a, there is a projection that was written in regard to 3.19 that states that the Board of Trustees, the leadership of the college and the AUC together would review shared governance and and review the systems organizational structure for that. So really for that, what we're looking for is kind of a blessing, endorsement, if you will, from the board to kind of say, yes, we will take part in that. I mean, we all know that there are areas that we're doing well in shared governance and there's areas that we can improve. And I think that commitment to just the process and the conversation surrounding the process is where we're going with that projection.
And I think, Janay, when we had a conversation, I can't even remember now because I can't remember, it's the new year. We were talking about getting the shared governance and AUC potentially on agendas, right? A little bit, instead of just, you know, when they come to us, but have kind of a standing agenda item, knowing what's going to be brought forth. And that was a potential opportunity.
You know, a couple of points of process for the, for the committee to think about. You know, one of the things that I had on my list towards the end to ask is, as we give a bit more definition to internal and external in particular, we can be thinking about that very question. What would agenda items, what would be valuable agenda items going forward, right? What, what kind of operational or programmatic, what we'd like to hear about and from other stakeholders within the college? More of a process point, you know, for trustees who understandably would not have necessarily contended with this accrediting body before, they're not looking for a tick list, right? We don't have to go down through this and say 3.19, 3.22, right? They don't, they don't look for it verbatim that way. Ultimately, our Self-Study is more like a comprehensive narrative that is sort of all woven together. So if it seemed like you all didn't necessarily touch on 3.19, the college is folding that perspective in other areas. So do rest assured in that sense.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll just add one more thing related to the chairperson, Mary Kate Murin, in relation to what she said about the Building 20 or the Facility Committee. There is some new language in one of the standards that relates to the board assessing themselves as it relates to involvement in strategic decisions and confronting unforeseen circumstances. And this is new language that was added this year. And I think, you know, something like what you're speaking about would absolutely relate to that. I can't help but think that it was added this year in relation to what we've all been dealing with. But when the question was posed to Netchy, they said, yes, it does have to do with COVID, but it also has to do with a lot of other things that are things that are specific to each campus and we know infrastructure, obviously, and our campus is one of those things. So I think that would, not in a projection form, but in kind of an actionable item, it will show how we relate to this portion of the standard.
Okay. So now we know what we're committing to and what the board has to work on moving forward. Okay.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll take everything, Janay, that potential opportunities that come out of your committee. And then we'll present them, of course, in the board meeting to make sure we're then, we're set for that final paper, you know, the final has to be submitted around the 14th of February, giving us time to then prepare for the April visit that will happen on, I said property, on campus.
Okay. Is there anything else regarding this section?
I don't think so. I think we just wanted to reinforce those items and call your attention again to the packet to make sure that you've gone through Standard III and read it. So that we, we welcome your feedback as it relates to that. And then also to look at the governance survey to see if this is something you think would assist the board in adding some questions. We intend to do this every year. So that is another way in which if you wish to get an external perspective from the board, you could use. And then obviously the language that we've provided you for commitments to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, now moving on to Student Affairs, highlights and initiatives.
Let me just wrap that one up if you don't mind. So again, my thanks to our accreditation co-chairs, Suzanne, Professor Atwater, thank you both. We're going to see you next week again with Ways and Means, but thanks for helping again facilitate. Just again, as a process point, I think for trustees, we wanted to really sound you out. We wanted to help usher forward these types of projections. What you're going to see in advance of the full trustee meeting at the end of the month is the Self-Study in its entirety and it will now include these projections, again, subject to any change between now and then. So do look for the entire document. It's a, it's a big thing. It's, it's, you know, beyond, if you will, what you've seen in the past with things like the Campus Master Plan. But again, that's how we'll sort of help shepherd this forward. We've been vetting this all fall semester. Again, we want to make sure we're going to get you a comprehensive document because we will seek the full board endorsement of it at the end of the month. But that's really how we'll sort of march this along.
Yeah, I just wondered, Janay, you know, we can go through that and then as we set the agenda for the board, that's when we'll need some action and alignment from everyone. I think it gives us enough time just to take the recommendations of, you know, the accreditation, the committee. And then for me also to ask if I can get someone to be the liaison. I think there's been a little bit of, there's been an opportunity for that since Frank left, so I want to be able to fill that and I'll hopefully have an answer in the next day or two on that also.
Okay. Do we want to go as far as asking Chris and Suzanne to, I guess, maybe take a stab at tweaking the current survey and tailoring it towards the Board of Trustees, so we have maybe a sample assessment at the next meeting?
I would just caution against moving that quickly. I think that having a survey and assessment is the right plan and to do in the right time. But if we try to do it too quickly, it may not serve you in the best way that you need. And so, I mean, we're willing to help as we move along in the process. But I'm not so sure that in a short term, gathering those documents and preparing them and kind of customizing them might, might be the, might not be the best way. That would just be my opinion.
And Janay, I'm still waiting for Mark Noes, as I mentioned, over email this weekend. And help me here, Dr. Cook. Quinn, Quinn C. Knock, is that how I say Community College?
Quinn Sigamint.
Okay, that wasn't even close.
QCC, we'll just call it QCC there in Worcester.
Great. They currently do a self-assessment, so I'm trying to get my hands on that, Janay, so we can review it. And sometimes it's best to, you know, borrow with pride, some of the best practices that other community colleges are doing. So I'm hoping to have that ASAP. So as soon as I get that, I'll forward that to you.
And I actually have that assessment and I can send it directly to you.
Oh, perfect.
Yes, please, to Janay, you know, so she can, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
That governance survey is meant as an example of what might constitute an external perspective to go along with a bigger assessment. So it's only a part. And that's, that's the one that I think would have to be tweaked more.
Any other comments? Or questions? Okay, moving on to Student Affairs.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Happy to provide some updates for Student Affairs. And Nanette, if you could advance the slide, please. This evening I'm going to be providing an overview related to enrollment, our Fall 2019 in comparison to Fall 2020 by gender, race, ethnicity, school and program. And I'll also drill down a bit into the liberal arts, general studies and discuss some outreach initiatives. I'd also like to thank Suzanne Smith and her team. They are really an important component of pulling together this overview. And much of the information that I'll share in this was prepared in conjunction with Suzanne and her team. I'll also talk about the Equity Agenda and our MALE Initiative for Leadership in Education, known as MILE, our Trio Student Support Services, and talk about some upcoming opportunities to advance our Equity Agenda. Next slide, please. You'll see in this enrollment overview that our enrollment decline, largest changes in our new student population. And in the next several slides, we will focus on new students in particular and then drill down and highlight where the enrollment changes are coming from. Next slide, please. This slide here you'll see is our enrollment overview by gender. And you'll see that I've highlighted in red the percent decrease of male students as it's much greater than that of females and it's more pronounced in both absolute numbers and in percent total to new students. And in the next slide, we're going to see an overview by race, ethnicity. And you can see our Black or African-American student change is down 19.2%. And our Hispanic or Latinx of any race is down 14.9%. And our white student population down 13.4%. So you can see in the fall-to-fall comparison that the enrollment decline is more pronounced in our Black or African-American and Hispanic and Latinx populations. When we drill down by school, you can see the largest percentage of change in new student enrollment is in our School of Liberal and Professional Studies. So we've provided here an overview of all students, new students and continuing students. But you'll see in that middle grid, the population that we're going to focus on and discuss a little bit more is that new student population in Liberal and Professional Studies. Next slide, please. You'll see when we drill down in Liberal Arts and General Studies, the significant populations do, are at 28.9% overall Liberal Arts, General Studies and 29.5% General Studies. Next slide, please. So what are we doing about the declines? And what are we doing to try to positively influence enrollment for not only spring semester but looking ahead to fall? We are looking at phone and we have implemented phone and email campaigns. You'll see in the bullet points, the first-time first-year general studies students who were enrolled in 2020 this fall. Our outreach campaign to those students is to find out what is it about STCC that appealed to them? Why did they decide to enroll at STCC? So we can get a better understanding of what it is about the general studies population for our first-time first-year students and try to make some more informed outreach initiatives so that we can try to move the needle a bit on that loss. We're also taking a look at new students who were accepted but didn't end up enrolling for Fall 2020. So again, both phone and email outreach campaigns. And we're using professional staff as well as student callers, depending on what the topic is for the outreach. Our admissions team is working very closely with Springfield Public High Schools for Fall '21. We have a roadmap to STCC initiative. We're on a monthly basis, we offer live and recorded presentations on a variety of topics that really help us move through the enrollment process and the enrollment funnel with both students, counselors and family members. So we kicked off December with a presentation on Career Coach, which is free, free service that's available through our website where individuals can go in and take a look at jobs. They can take a look at workforce information. They can do some resume building. So it's really a tool that we introduced initially to kind of get people excited about exploring different academic programs as well as career possibilities. We're also calling our returning not-registered students for the previous four semesters. So you may have heard me mention previously that we were in a practice of pulling maybe one semester of returning not-registered or perhaps two, and we've really opened that up to be able to outreach to more students. And this is a collaborative effort between not only individuals in Student Affairs, but also, you know, depending on who we're contacting and what their needs are. Our Testing and Assessment Center is helping out Registrar's office as well as financial aid. So it's really an all-hands-on-deck phone and email campaign. So it's really an all-hands-on-deck phone and email campaign outreach at this point. In particular, with our Trio Student, our Trio SSS, our peer leaders are calling our returning not-registered students. And those students are able to make appointments directly with an academic advisor. So really just trying to say, hey, we see you're not registered, let us help by getting you connected and we'll make an appointment for you with your academic advisor. We're also doing email campaigns to not only their STIC email accounts, but to their personal email accounts as well for the returning not-registered to encourage re-enrollment. And so again, we're going to look at, we're outreach into the previous four semesters. And we're also collaborating in particular with Trio with our Office of Disability Services and Veteran Affairs as well. So ensuring that the conversations that our folks in Disability Services and Veteran Affairs are having with their students, you know, they make, you know, kind of a connection to the supports and resources that are available through Trio. So that we can, you know, really make sure that students are aware that there is a support system in place to help encourage not only persistence, but, you know, completion. Okay, next slide, please. So I want to move into how we're taking the data that we just looked at. So in particular, our new students, in particular, our male students of color. And what can we do to really impact the enrollment, persistence and completion of a very specific population of students? MILE is an initiative that has existed at STIC for some time in a, in a way that has been much like an organization and organic and outreach initiative whereby individuals who work at the institution are really passionate about, you know, academic support, mentoring and community engagement opportunities for male students. And we have an opportunity through our, the Higher Education Innovation Fund Grant Process as well as success funding, to be able to propose and implement that MILE be more of an institutionalized effort, which I'm really excited about. So what we would like to do is really make this a part of STIC. So take it from, you know, individuals who are really passionate about the work, who really have dedicated their time above and beyond their current job responsibilities. And actually say, as an institution, we're going to support this as an office. You know, as, as a team of individuals who are going to really address the issues of increasing enrollment retention and completion rates of our Black and Latino males at STIC. And in the next slide, I'm going to go through a little bit of how we are looking at and proposing that we do this. So what we'd like to do is model MILE after Trio. And you'll see here, this is the, sort of the overview of how many students Trio can serve and how many students they're able to serve on an annual basis and how they staff that. So right now with MILE, again, it's about, you know, four to six professionals who, you know, are giving as much of their time as they can towards the mission and goals of MILE. But what we'd really like to do is model it and staff it like our Trio SSS. And I've also included the standardized objectives in the lower portion of this slide. And what I wanted to note is in 2014, 2015 grant year, Trio went through a bit of what they call a transformation, where counseling appointments were extended from 30 minutes to an hour with each participant. Counselors were required to conduct in-person meetings versus through email. They had to have face-to-face appointments. They were required to have more contact with students, so they had to do five now as opposed to two previously. And participants who received grades of D or below were required to attend academic tutoring. Peer advisors were required to conduct seminars opposed to office assistants who were doing it previously. And workshops were conducted on a monthly basis instead of two times a semester. So in Trio, the high engagement, high support, both from the academic perspective, academic support, tutoring, the high touch by meeting with assigned academic counselors, by meeting with peer advisors, that combined support with the financial resources resulted in our 2019, 2020 grant cycle of us achieving for the first time since those changes, each of these standardized objectives, achieving or exceeding these. So we know that the model works. We know that that increased level of engagement and participation and that customized focus and working to meet the needs of each individual student is a successful model. And that's really the direction that we'd like to move with our MILE program. In the last slide, you'll see some examples of next steps. So in particular, searching for a full-time director or coordinator of MILE, someone who's going to collaborate not only with our admissions office, but with guidance counselors and principals to establish some really strong pathways to STIC and really work on participation goals and outcomes, like we saw those standardized outcomes for Trio. You know, what, what do we want to do as far as our model and our standardized objectives for MILE in particular? Identify some faculty champions in each of the schools. That's also something that we see a connection in Trio is that there are faculty, you know, embedded faculty connections. We want to collaborate with advising to develop specific academic plans for each of our participants. Identify professional mentors and peer leaders, provide them training, and then hire the staff and develop the program outcomes again in line with what we've seen be successful outcomes related to Trio. Some academic support considerations as well as wraparound support. So things like meeting with an academic advisor to review and develop that academic success plan. You know, really drilling down into what the specific needs are of the student as far as time management, study skills, study habits, you know, understanding their career path, meeting on a regular basis to review progress, make adjustments, infuse supports as needed. Look at creating summer bridge opportunities for students. You know, and we can also look at things like prepping students prior to the semester, beginning with a syllabus review and mapping. You know, what is a syllabus? What does that mean? How do you use that to plan out your semester? And what are the benefits of doing that? Having dedicated tutors or supplemental instructors, depending on the needs of the students. And then our wraparound considerations, you know, providing laptop textbooks. You know, the necessary materials that students need to be successful. And then providing that professional mentor to meet on a regular basis and requiring the participation in professional development workshops, programs, community networking events and job and career exploration opportunities. So this is, again, something that we're really excited about. The Vanessa Hill, Rick Recco and I met with some members of the academic leadership team to talk about funding and how we apply for grants. I know there's, there's folks on the call today who are in our AIA at STIC. And these are themes that, you know, we've talked about and outcomes that we have, you know, wanted to see. And so I see this work really infusing well into not only what Student Affairs is doing, but what the work of AIA is doing as well. And to that end, the AIA has met as a full group twice already. We have our next meeting coming up this Thursday, where we'll talk about the themes that have come up in our meetings. And we're going to push towards moving for some outcomes and deliverables associated with those themes, develop some subcommittees around those deliverables. And then really get to establishing some tactics and timelines associated with that. And our facilitators do meet on a weekly basis with the consultant. So I'm really looking forward to this week, talking a little bit more in detail with our consultant about our plans for MILE and how that connects to the Equity work that we're already engaged in.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, just, just a quick one, Darcy. What is the, what's the calendar timeline for the Innovation Fund? And with that application process and, and is it, is it an annual or is it a two-year grant? You know, because if you're going to be hiring somebody, right, you want that consistency.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And that's a great question. Thank you. The Innovation Fund is only until the end of August, I believe. And so we have to get our application in very quickly. And it's, it's a very limited amount of funding. I think it's up to $75,000. So that certainly won't, you know, sustain MILE, you know, as a, as an institutional commitment. So what we are doing is stacking it with our success funding. And so the success funding has a much longer timeline and runway for us to be able to do that. And I believe those funds need to be expended by the end of fiscal '22. So that'll give us a little bit more time.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions?
Bill Johnson. I noticed like criminal justice is down like, what, 83 students? No, no, it's down 43 students if I'm reading it correctly. The students, the type of students that go on to take the criminal justice, are those mostly individuals that are looking to go into law enforcement? Or what is that, what is that for?
That's a great question and one that I don't have the data on this evening, but I'm happy to get that for you.
Well, to me is to find out the issue, you got to find out why they're taking it. You know, I'm looking at some of the ones that are down, like criminal justice. From what I understand, most individuals are looking to go into law enforcement. The local communities take the criminal justice because they feel it gives them a heads up on, on the interview process. So, you know, if that's what the issue is, it's, that's not something we're going to be able to fix because police officers are retiring left and right. And people don't want to get into that field right now with, with all the dynamics, I guess, you know, and then I see liberal arts, you know, what? General studies, what does that get you? That's down, what, 321? So we got to kind of, in my opinion, then we got to kind of dial out, dial into it and see why they're taking these courses or why they were, you know, for what reason? And then we can kind of maybe fix it. You got to diagnose the problem before you can, you know, just, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but that's, I think it'd be great to find out why most people take the criminal justice, for example.
Yeah. And I thank you to Dr. DeBurly who put in the chat to, a reminder that these are first-year students that did not come this fall. Students from high schools that decided not to attend college at this time. So, and, and to trustee Johnson, to your point about needing to really understand why students are making the decisions they are, that really does speak to that, you know, being 28.9% down in the Liberal Arts and General Studies. And to try to get at is that call campaign that we're doing to General Studies students. So, okay, so those of you who choose us as first-time, first-year students, what is it about General Studies that you've selected? And it's, it's a way in which we can almost try to get at why we're down so significantly in that area. So it's not insignificant that we're down in criminal justice, but we did really take a look at General Studies primarily because of not only the percent change, but the sheer number of students that we were down in that area.
Well, that's what I'm looking at, like criminal justice, you know, liberal arts and general studies. Just outside my head, I would think that people wouldn't see a career path. And then maybe they're looking for more specifics. I, I, I don't know, you know, it's, I think everybody is facing this and it's, it's, we just try to, we got to try to build a better mousetrap, I guess, but anyway. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I also want to know what Dr. DeBurly put into the chat, because that's what I was thinking, which is that many first-year students go into General Studies and transfer into another program. Once they become acclimated with college, or maybe when they first come, they know, I want to seek higher education, but I don't know quite what it is that I want to do. And so we may see them come in under General Studies and then transfer into another program.
Okay, that makes sense. All right.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, moving on to workforce development highlights and initiatives.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening and Happy New Year. I'm Dave Benora. And I just want to, Dr. Cook asked me to kind of walk you all through a little bit of kind of the overview of what workforce development does. It's really broken up into four different categories, which I have on the slides here. So Nanette, thank you so much. You'd be so kind as to advance those, that's great. The first point I want to talk about is the Springfield Adult Learning Center, commonly referred to as SALK. And that's funded primarily by a competitive grant awarded by the Commonwealth. And you'll hear me talk about funding a lot here. A lot of the funding in workforce development, I hate to say it's cobbled together, because it's not, because it's thoughtfully cobbled together, but there are a lot of different funding sources that support workforce development. And here, the biggest chunk of the funding for the SALK program is to help people get prepared to take the HICE exam and get their GED. And that's to help people, obviously, so they can prepare better for the workforce to go into a job or that they can go to college and having that high school equivalency under their belt. So we do that by, we prepare them for the test, we offer technology classes and also offer college and career-ready workshops for folks to kind of help them get that whole experience. Remember, a lot of these folks are probably going to be first-generation collegegoers. So we do provide a lot of supports for them. This is the biggest chunk of funding for SALK. It's about a half a million dollars on a five-year grant that supports these activities. A second distinct program we have there is Hamden Prep. And that's funded by the Community Mitigation Grant through the Massachusetts Gaming Commission, which was implemented when MGM came to the Pioneer Valley. And we got $75,000 from this program. And that allows us to offer programs for students in academics, computer, computer literacy and job-ready skills to get them, again, a broad swath of skills so that they can be competitive in the job market when they're trying to go get jobs. The third program under SALK is the Transitions to College Program. And this is, you know, a well-described program. We applied for the SALK Transitions to College Program funding through the Commonwealth. And we got about $82,000 for this program. And it's for adult learners who have completed their high school equivalency. And it allows them to become college students and allows us to support opportunities for them like enrolling in college classes or developmental courses. We can provide them academic supports, workshops to help them discover their career interests and what track they might want to go in in college. And really a focus to help with specific needs of first-generation college students and adult high school equivalency earners. So those are three of the bigger, the three, the big programs in what we would refer to really as adult basic education. The other program under SALK is the English for Speakers of Other Languages. And this we do in partnership with Holyoke Community College. And in fact, we sub-grant this funding out to Holyoke, although we supervise the program and administer the program. And here, the program provides English-speaking, listening, reading and writing classes from beginners to advanced levels. So students get an assessment when they come in. And then we place them in one of four levels in the ESL programs. And so the program focuses on language and academic skills. Again, digital literacy, it's got to be a huge focus even pre-pandemic. But especially now, we're seeing how critical it is with the digital skills that folks are going to need to be successful in college and in the workplace. We also help them look at career next steps and help with civic and community integration. And the ESL program served 149 students last year, which is great. Because, you know, the way, we're always over-enrolled, we're funded for about 96 seats. And we had 149 students in the program last year. So there's a huge, huge need for ESL in this area. If you can go to the next slide, please, Nanette.
Quick question.
Out of what we do.
Excuse me?
Workforce development.
Excuse me, Dave?
Yes.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
About the ESL.
Yes.
And for the enrollment to be so high, I noticed there aren't any learning gains or any information.
And for the enrollment to be so high, I noticed there aren't any learning gains, um, or any information around learning gains. Do we have? Do we know what that is?
Yeah, I do have information on that. I, I can send that to you. We've got a pretty full report on, on what those, what those gains are. Um, in the interest of time, I was trying to trim it down, but I can definitely get that to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, let me just make a note of that. Okay, um, workforce development, this is what we think about sort of the traditional job training, uh, aspect of what we do here at STIC. And the, um, number of students served, uh, it's about 1,000 students. That's fairly consistent from year to year. They're in programs as varied as health and information technology, skill train, electrical, plumbing, uh, things like that. We offer 75 different sections in these different types of classes. I just want to highlight a few of them for you. If you go to our webpage, you would see the whole catalog, everything we have to offer. Uh, and another thing I'll say is right now I, I am working on a, an annual report, which we'll put together. We do that every year and we'll get that out to the board when that's done as well. So you get a bigger breadth and scope of what workforce does. But a couple of the highlights, uh, I really want to highlight the Certified Nursing Assistant and Flobotomy Program. Uh, these are regularly, regularly offered and, um, really they're always very strongly enrolled. The challenge in 2020, of course, was how the classes were delivered, given the pandemic. And that was a big challenge, um, for workforce, just as it was for credit. Because so much of what we do is hands-on, particularly CNA and flobotomy, uh, have to be hands-on. So when, when the pandemic forced everything to shut down, we, um, we shut down the classes temporarily until we could figure out the best way to how to complete the program safely. And, you know, through a lot of hard work of a lot of people, we were able to restart the suspended programs in the summer in the low-density lab format, much like we offered the low-density labs for the credit health, uh, and allied health classes. Um, and that allowed nine students to complete the CNA program and 18 students to complete the flobotomy program. And then once we had that experience behind us, we then offered new sections of CNA and flobotomy in the fall, starting in October, which allowed us to get nine more CNA students through and 15 more students through the flobotomy program. So we've kind of gotten to our groove here. We actually just started a new CNA class today. And we're starting, um, two new sections of flobotomy, uh, hopefully, um, at the end of the month where we hope to enroll about 15 more students in those courses. So, you know, given the need for healthcare workers, obviously, we want to keep continuing to offer through those programs, although unfortunately, because of social distancing, we can't do it in the volume that we had done, uh, pre-COVID. But, um, we're happy that we're still able to get these students through and they're very dedicated to, uh, to finishing the classes. Uh, the next one I want to talk about is our partnership with the Massachusetts Water Works Association. And we've developed and implemented a series of courses targeted at the Commonwealth's Water Distribution and Management Workforce. And we did this by partnering with the Massachusetts Water Works Association and the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission to create online certificate training. And this was actually created as an online course that would have a statewide reach even before COVID. Uh, so in some respects, we were actually very well-prepared for COVID in the case of these programs because they were already set up with a blackboard shell and offered online. Uh, one of the things that we did that's unique to this program and the Commonwealth is, uh, as an added incentive to encourage new people to get into the careers in the water industry, the training is offered free of charge to any student currently enrolled at a Massachusetts Community College. So they can take it without paying tuition, without paying for books. And again, we're trying to figure out as a way to get more people interested in these careers, uh, because they are good careers and there are jobs out there for folks. Right now, the training has been offered in two different areas. One is for, to learn more about water distribution and the other is to learn more about water treatment. So, um, what these trainings help people do is to work in positions like water system manager, water treatment operator and water quality technician. So we've offered the treatment class three times since the fall of 2019 and it's been completed by 58 individuals. And the distribution course, um, has been offered once so far and it was completed by 17 individuals. So we're offering the treatment class again, starting next month and we're, we're planning on offering these every, every couple of months, um, as the need is out there, uh, to continue to enroll folks in these programs. Uh, and again, you know, given the situation with COVID, to have a, a, um, distance learning or remote class, um, that's, that's, uh, ready to go, uh, we're going to keep trying to offer this as aggressively as we can. Uh, the next program I want to bring your attention, which you may have heard about, um, is the Asphalt Quality Control Analyst Program. And this is another one we do in partnership with area businesses. And we're going to start, uh, we're, we're enrolling for a class that starts in February right now. So this is a 20, 280-hour course and it's a pre-apprenticeship program, which qualifies people then to go into a paid on-the-job training apprenticeship program with a local company that works in the asphalt industry. And, um, these are companies that are members and we partner with the Massachusetts Aggregate and Asphalt Pavement Association to make our connection to the businesses there. And they actually help us recruit the students to enroll in the program. There's a lot of the students in these programs are already working in the industry. Uh, the other part of this class with another partnership, it also includes a hot mixed asphalt plant technician certification course and exam that we offer here at the STIC Asphalt Academy. And we have the Mobile Asphalt Laboratory that's, um, in the parking lot near building 35, where the students actually are learning how to, to, to work, um, with the skills they need to complete this program. And this program, this is not for folks that are sort of lay, laying pavement out on the roads. These are folks that are going to be, I mean, they are out on the roads. But the jobs that folks are getting in these programs is, um, they're testing the asphalt to make sure the asphalt that they're putting down meets the standards to make sure that it will be, uh, you know, good, good pavement, um, where it's laid down. And for this certification, we're offering that in partnership with the Northeast Transportation Training and Certification Program. It's actually their certification. We're offering the program in conjunction with them, so that we can get more people to get the certification that they need. The last program I want to talk to you about is with Mass Hire and Smith &amp; Wesson. Obviously, we do a lot of work with Mass Hire. And here we're partnering with Mass Hire to offer classes to support registered apprenticeship training for incumbent Smith &amp; Wesson employees. So they go through this program and that allows them to move up in the workforce at Smith &amp; Wesson. And the program runs in cohorts and ideally we try to run three cohorts a year. Again, unfortunately, COVID has kind of messed that up a little bit. But, um, the idea is to offer it in cohorts of about 16 individuals. And it's got three legs. And the thing that's interesting about this is it's, they get access to non-credit as well as credit programming. So one aspect of it is they, we offer a non-credit class in safety and OSHA 10 training. The other thing is we, once they're done, they're done with the OSHA training, then they're into another non-credit program where they're learning general manufacturing processing principles. And also, uh, there is a content on manufacturing, problem-solving and foundational workplace math skills. So they're getting better math skills, again, so they can move up while they're working at Smith &amp; Wesson and other jobs. And then sort of the capstone of this relationship is then they enroll in a three-credit course in Essentials for Manufacturing Technicians, of course, that we, we already offer. And it's been, it's been very successful because then also it provides multiple gateways for folks. They can either just, you know, continue to work at Smith &amp; Wesson and move up the chain there, but exposing them to a three-credit course gives them the opportunity to say, hey, maybe I want to enroll in more credit courses and maybe use that as part of my career pathway to, to look at some of the STEM courses that we have here at STIC for them to get a credit certificate or a credit degree. So, um, we're starting another cohort of this in the spring. And as I said, we hope to do this on a, on a fairly regular basis. So that's the workforce development aspect of what we do with the Workforce Development Center. Uh, the next slide talks about the Authorized Testing Center.
Hey Dave, can I, can I interrupt just really quick?
Yes, please.
So, um, I know you've already said you've done, um, and do do a lot with Mass Hire. With, with WEOWA going on right now and historically, right, Reb had always used a lot of the WEOWA, years ago for CNA. What's the, the, the partnership with Mass Hire and, and with that? And how does that work? Cause there, there's a ton of money on that side of the house, right? How do we, you know, potentially get our hands on it?
Yeah, we still do that with the CNA and then, you know, we, we put our, our programs that are certified, um, to be, to be used for the WEOWA funding. So it's, it's, it's a constant communication with Dave Cruz and his team and, and with the folks in the Career Center. That's another initiative we're starting up now is to be more proactive in meeting with the folks at the Springfield Career Center and at the, at the other career centers with Mass Hire to make sure that the folks that are coming to the Career Center understand what courses are available through STIC to be able to use those WEOWA dollars for.
Yeah, and I think that's always an opportunity, right, is to ensure that Springfield and the surrounding communities are all in the sandbox playing nice. Right? Because why, why, why offer duplicate programs? And I know we've had this conversation, not just workforce development, but other, um, areas too. It just seems with everything that's going on, this is going to be an avenue. I think a lot of adult learners are really going to really looked for in, um, down and dirty, quick type of trainings to prepare them for classes, uh, or for jobs, excuse me, as they open. So there's a lot of opportunities.
Unfortunately, I think one of the things we're still seeing is people do, are, you're absolutely right. But it does seem like people are still trying to wait this out. You know, I, I had a meeting with, uh, with Dave Cruz, uh, before the break to try to see what he was seeing out there. And, you know, they're having a similar problem, like we talked about our enrollment earlier. Um, he's having a similar, uh, challenge that a lot of the courses that they're offering, some through us, some from other schools, some through other providers, is, um, some of them aren't filling up because people are just kind of waiting this out to see what happens still. And whether that's because, I think it's a combination of things. I think it's people just don't know what direction it's going to head. Uh, I think some people have childcare concerns. I think some people are concerned about getting sick and going back out there until there's vaccines. So there are a lot of reasons. But, um, but you're right, it's, it's that constant communication and trying to leverage the different work that we do. I mean, um, I, I, I work with, you know, with Jeff Hayden over, you know, my counterpart over at Holyoke, we meet every other week to talk about things. And, um, we're going to start up regular conversations too with Greenfield Community College and with Berkshire to look at the Western Massachusetts workforce season to try to leverage all of those things. Because as we know, you know, the needs out here in the western part of the state are a little bit different than the needs out in the eastern part of the state. So we definitely want to try to keep, continue to leverage those things and to piece together these funding streams. And, uh, because like I said, that, that is part of the challenge. I mean, there are, there are different funding streams. You know, there is a direct appropriation from the state that comes in for workforce development every year. But the reality is you really do have to piece this together. There's WEOWA money. There are the different grants that we talked about, you know, Hamden Prep, we worked closely with Holyoke on. Uh, as I mentioned with the, with the SALK funding, the, um, the, um, ESL, you know, runs through Holyoke, but of course we're, we're, we're the administrator of that program. So we just got to keep working on those things. And I, and another goal is to continue to try to look at other grant opportunities that we can go at regionally as well as just for STIC to try to leverage what we're doing.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, the Authorized Testing Center is another thing that we, we do here through workforce development. And here we partner with a lot of the high-stakes computerized testing organizations. So these are folks that are, that have to sit for either entrance exams or certification exams for their industries. And we provide the proctoring for those exams. So a lot of people that are coming into this testing center, and this is the testing center that's in building two, some of them are STIC students, but a lot of them are community members that they sign up through the vendor to take their exam and then we proctor the exam for them. So, when times are, you know, pre-COVID, we're averaging about 305 exams administered every month. But of course, with the pandemic and social distancing, we've had to rework how we do this. The compute, the, the testing center in building two has 23 stations. Because of social distancing right now, we can only move nine people through a day. Because we've got to keep the distance and keep everybody safe. And I am happy to say that we've been doing that since September. And it has worked very well. We have not had any incidences with anybody, you know, being sick that's come in at the center. And our staff have done a really great job, um, all sorts of staff in the college, making sure the center is safe. So we're still continuing to offer these programming. Uh, one thing that we were able to do is we worked on one of the, one of the, um, very important entrance exams to take is called the TEES exam. And that's the exam that individuals have to take when they want to enroll in nursing or allied health programs. And folks that want to take these programs at STIC come and take the test at our center, but people that are enrolling in other colleges will also come and take the test at our center. Um, we were able to work with the entity that, that runs that test to offer the exam remotely and we proctor it remotely with our STIC staff. And that's gone very well. So that in combination with having the testing center open Mondays from Thursdays in the morning with social distancing, uh, we've been able to provide since, um, August, 466 exams, both remote and in-person. So we're continuing to ramp that up and, um, we will keep doing it in, in, uh, in a volume that we can to ensure that everybody stays safe. But we're happy that we've been able to continue to offer these exams in the testing center. So that's the Authorized Testing Center. The last piece, unless anybody has any questions about the testing center, the last piece I want to go to is the Career Services Center. And this is a function that moved to workforce development in September of this year. And, um, on average, we're seeing about 30 students per month. And the idea here was we, the person that was the longtime Director of Career Services when it was under Student Services retired. And the thought was to create some more synergy between internship and job placement activities that workforce was already doing. And to combine that, combine that with the business outreach that workforce was already doing. Uh, you know, Dr. DeBurley and Vice President Kemp and Dr. Cook and I, uh, talked and we thought it would be a good synergy to continue these connectedness, but to have the Career Services Center sit under workforce development. Uh, because that way, when we're going out talking to businesses, we can talk to them about potential job training, we can talk to them about job placement, we can talk to them about internship opportunities. And with all under the workforce umbrella, uh, we figured that would be a good connection to make. It would help us enhance our business outreach efforts. So, um, what the Career Services Center does, it provides information and resources to both credit and non-credit students as well as alumni to help them through the process of career and life goal setting. Now, Vice President Kemp earlier mentioned Career Coach. That's been a tremendous tool. That's a, a national model that we, uh, here at STIC took on this year. Uh, I worked at two other community colleges previously and we use Career Coach there as well. And the great thing about Career Coach is it can be a standalone tool. If you go to that, um, the website that's there, the stick, uh, dot E M S I C C dot com. You can navigate through there. You can find out labor market information. But the thing that's really interesting about it is when you're in there, it links you to the programs, both credit and non-credit that STIC offers that will prepare you for that career. So say you're interested in the healthcare field and say you're looking into nursing, whether it's certified nursing or the associate degree nursing program, you're interested in that field. You can look and see real-time job postings in that area. You can also see the average wage that those jobs pay. And then really importantly, you can see, okay, these are the programs that are offered at STIC that you could take that would prepare you to go into those careers. So, um, we think that's a really good tool, but we also don't want to lose the personal touch. As I said, we've got about 30 students coming in every month to talk to our, um, our internship and job placement coordinator. She works closely with the, um, credit folks, uh, the, the academic affairs folks as well as folks in, uh, Vice President Kemp's office to make sure that we're connected to students and they understand the opportunities that we offer and we can help them with resume writing and interview skills and kept them prepared for either an internship or a job. Uh, the other thing about these jobs is, as I said, it helps us with our interface with businesses. And our Senior Director of Workforce, he's out there talking to businesses. We're screening all these jobs that go up on our website. So if you go to our Career Coach site, you'll see jobs that are posted. But we don't just let anybody post a job because we're, if we're making those jobs available to STIC students or STIC alumni, we want to make sure that they're real jobs and we want to make sure it's a reputable place of business. So our, our Senior Director of Workforce is talking directly with individual businesses to talk to them about what type of person do you need? What is this career? How does this all fit? And then the job gets posted and then we try to do a match. We just don't send anybody over for a job or an internship. And as I said, we don't just post any jobs. So, and again, it's that personal touch, that interconnectedness that, that we're working through and that we're hoping to really create that synergy in Career Services. So, um, that is workforce development in a, in So that is workforce development in a, in a nutshell for you. You know, there's still opportunity here, you know, the way the economy is, as we talked about earlier. There is a sense of people waiting this out, but I think as this vaccine gets out there, as more businesses return to the workplace, the opportunity is really going to be there. And we want to be prepared to be able to give people the skills that they need so they can go into careers and to give the businesses in the Pioneer Valley the skilled workforce they need for their businesses to continue to perform.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? I know we did a few, okay. Next, we're going to do Advancement in External Affairs, Highlights and Initiatives.
Evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. Nanette, could you advance? Fantastic, thank you. You can advance to the, to the very first slide. All right, so Happy New Year, everyone. I am going to start off with External Affairs. As many of you know from previous presentations, myself, the President have made it a real concerted effort to ensure that we have kept communication and engagement with our local delegation. Now, when I say local delegation, I don't mean just our legislators and the statewide level. But we've also engaged our local municipal elected leaders as well as our congressmen. Mainly because we know how important, especially in this particular landscape, how important it is to ensure that they know how important STCC is to the region's workforce and economy. And that we continue to stay at the top of mind when they are making decisions regarding higher education as well as the budget. And so this past December, we were able to hold a virtual coffee hour. Typically, we would have had this type of event on campus and it would have been a legislative breakfast as we've done in the past. But due to COVID, we were able to do it virtually. And we did have a very nice turnout. We had our current legislators present as well as some of our newly elected who are scheduled to be sworn in in just a few days attend. And the focus of those, of that particular conversation was really around the overarching support of STIC. And in particular, we were able to really talk about funding. Dr. Cook was able to talk about the state appropriation and how important it is to ensure level funding. And then we also were able to really underscore the importance of Building 20. And Leader Wagner and Senator Eric Lesser were present at this particular session, which is significant because Leader Wagner was the representative who offered the amendment to have STIC in the Economic Development Bill. And Senator Lesser, because he chairs the Conference Committee, which is where the bill is currently sitting. And is probably very likely being debated right at this very moment, if not today, then tomorrow. And it's important to mention, for those who may not be familiar with our General Court, that in just two days, the session will end and the new General Court will take its place and be sworn in. And that's significant because if there is no resolve to this bill, that we are optimally, we are optimistically awaiting a favorable report, then it will mean that it will, it will die, which means that the funding that we are hoping for will in essence die with it and we will have to restart our efforts. Which is why I have down at the bottom continued advocacy. Because no matter what happens, we will continue to ensure that we reiterate how important STIC is to, to the region, how much our students and the incoming students rely on an institution such as ourselves. And so we will continue to maintain contact and continue to foster those relationships. You can advance to, to the next slide. So in addition to serving as the Vice President of Advancement in External Affairs and the foundation surely does fall under advancement, I also serve as the Executive Director of the Foundation. And so in my first two years here at the college, our focus was really around the capital campaign, the Campaign for Student Success. And it was the first campaign in about 10 years. And we were able to raise approximately $2.1 million. And so that was no small feat. And we are, of course, excited about what we were able to garner. But we also know that we're looking forward to being able to double that in, in the years to come. And, and whenever it is that we decide to have another capital campaign. So as of right now, beginning this fall semester, we really shifted our focus towards annual giving with a goal of 50,000. And so annual giving is really important because it, it goes back to, to the fundamentals, to the building blocks of, of any nonprofit, which is to ensure that you are nurturing your current donors and cultivating new donors. And really building good fiscal health. That not only do we have a good portion of restricted funding, but that we also have some unrestricted funding, which allows us to be more flexible and innovative in how we operate the foundation. So some highlights that I want to point out is that we have four appeals scheduled. And appeals mean requests or some of you may have received the very first appeal that went out this past fall. And it was an appeal to support the Ram Cupboard. Because STCC is located in a food desert and many of our students have to contend with food insecurities. So that particular appeal went to support the Ram Cupboard. So we'll have four appeals, two that have already taken place this past fall semester, and then another two that will take place in the spring. We also have participated in Giving Tuesday. This is the third time that the foundation has participated in Giving Tuesday. And I'm happy to report that based on last year's data, which is when I came into play and so did Kelly Galanis, our Director of Operations, we were able to double, or more than double what we raised on Giving Tuesday, which is pretty significant. You'll also notice that we did an end of year giving appeal. And I say that because I'm really, really hoping that you all are on our email list, our email distribution list. And so if you're not, let me know, you could drop your name in the chat, but I believe we have many of you. But we did do an end of year giving appeal. We sent it out twice and we made sure to highlight, and I believe Keith sent it out a couple of days before the new year to highlight the opportunity to give up to $300 and for that to be a tax deduction. So this month, we're really excited about the launch of the Ram Warrior Giving. And the Ram Warrior Giving is an initiative that's going to allow for consistent giving. And it pretty much is an opportunity to give and to give on a recurring monthly basis, to set it and, and forget it. So, you know, you'll get, you'll oftentimes get an appeal, you know, in September. And then you'll get one in November for Thanksgiving, and then you'll get one in December. And some folks feel like that's too overwhelming. I'd rather just give all at once. And for some, some people think, you know, I, I'd love to give, you know, 50 bucks, but you know, I just can't at this moment. But if you're able, then you can set it at five bucks and you can give, you know, five bucks every month and that amounts to 60 bucks. And that, whether you think so or not, is really helpful and very impactful. So the other benefits again is that it's convenient, it's environmentally friendly. We're really thinking about how much paper we use at the office and how being able to shift to virtual and online giving is definitely eco-friendly. It also allows us to project fundraising support and who and what we can count on coming in. And then lastly, again, always thinking about cost saving. It definitely allows for us to save on time and then administrative time as well as, as postage. So we're happy to report that Jean Cassidy, who is the CEO of the Biggie, will be some, will be our poster child. Like he has agreed to, to really spearhead this effort and we're excited to have him. In addition, we're also going to be deploying in the next few weeks, the Legacy Giving Society. That has also gone out, it will go out twice a semester. So I'm sorry, once a semester. So it went out last semester and it will go out at the end of this month. And this is a really targeted ask, a targeted appeal to specific donors and alums who fall within a particular age bracket, who might be in the midst of planning their estates. So it's really targeted. We've been the benefactors of quite a few estate gifts, which is phenomenal. And so we want to make sure that we do that at least twice a year. And we know that right now is a really critical time as people begin to think about the new year and planning and putting their finances in order. We know that, you know, we, we all are trying very hard to, to do as much as possible to, to keep up with the mission of the college and the foundation, which is to really mitigate any financial barriers that our students might face to successfully completing their education. And so in an office of three, it's really hard to do all that it is that we want to do. So we've been making a really concerted effort to engage our Board of Directors and have, asking them to be really collaborative in donor cultivation. So they are beginning to make ask, they are sending out thank you notes to our donors. And they are actually participating and making phone calls to donors as well. Lastly, and definitely not least, with an eye on equity and the institution really focusing on how to be an anti-racist institution. Dr. Cook charged us with taking a look at our practices and our policies and procedures. And one of the places that the foundation has begun to focus their, their work is looking at our scholarship recruitment and dispersment process. And so one of the things that we know is that students can't and they won't apply unless they know. Unless they know of these opportunities. And so we know that in order to have a diverse pool of students to look at and to be able to diversify who in fact is getting these scholarship dollars, then we really need to look at the front door. We need to figure out how do we increase our applicant pool? And what are some of the other systemic changes that we can incorporate? So the very first one that we've been able to implement was shifting our dispersment of scholarship dollars from the spring to the fall. And in all honesty, that really was a, a retention initiative. We did that because we thought we're giving out scholarships to students who are on their way out the door. And they could very likely need this money, or students could need this money for the spring semester. So we've shifted to giving out scholarships in the fall and then awarding a few in the spring because that's just how their agreements were written up. But the other thing that we've done is we have increased our marketing efforts around how to apply. We've extended the, the, the window for when students can apply. We've begun to collaborate with Student Affairs. Darcy was kind enough to, to identify someone from her department who helped work hand in hand with Kelly to look and make sure that every student that started an application, finished the application, if they needed assistance, then that was provided. Because of COVID and being virtual and remote, we were able to provide scholarship sessions at various times. So we did some early mornings, we did some in the afternoon, we did some late at night. We also partnered with Trio Gateway to College, the, the Career Pathways Program, which allowed us to get really niche populations. Kelly did a session for a Spanish speaking only class, which was really fantastic. So it increased the number of applicants, which meant that it increased, or we're hoping, we're, we're, we're looking at the data to hope that it increased the diversity of students who were able to receive those scholarship dollars. And so there's still a, a lot of work to do. One of the areas that we, we knew we had to look at, but it didn't necessarily rise to, it, it wasn't something that was glaring at the moment. We knew we had to do it and we just wasn't, we weren't sure, was the actual evaluators of these scholarships. And when we started the process and it came down to evaluating who was going to be, who was going to be reviewing these processes, we looked and we saw that we had several vacancies, whether it was because of attrition, retirement, people unable to serve, which then allowed us the opportunity to fill those vacancies with individuals from all across the college, from, you know, people from Trio, people from faculty, people from all types of departments. And we were able to also ensure gender and race representation. So we were really excited about that. I am in the process of finishing up an executive summary that will be presented to the Foundation Board. And it would be my hope that at some point I present it to internal, external in, in the future. You can advance, Nanette. And then lastly, and also not least, is my communications and marketing. You know, we're really excited about the accolades which we have down at the bottom. And I believe at the last internal and external meeting we had in November, I was able to highlight the four awards that STCC was able to garner, which is really exciting. But right now, we are concurrently planning for both the FY22 budget as well as the marketing plan. And those two go hand in hand and we can't really do one without, without the other. So just know that, you know, we are working with all of our colleagues across the, the college to ensure that we are adapting to, to the pandemic and what that might look like for future semesters. And making sure that we are really underscoring our value proposition, which is our affordability and accessibility. And that would conclude my presentation, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to the President's perspective.
Evening as well and Happy New Year, everybody. I, I will be brief, I realize we're coming up on 6:30. What I do hope is that this committee comes away tonight with a view on the depth of operations. Obviously, a lot of considerations to bring forward and have you understand, but also our talent. My great thanks to Vice President Darcy Kemp, Vice President Denise Hurst, Assistant Vice President Dr. Day Penora. These are the folks we have at the helm, really helping chart a really important course forward for the college. As we know, accreditation is important to capture some of this work, but also all these efforts going forward. Even my appreciation, I want to, I want to give note to with trustee McDonald, yourself and your investment in our Anti-Racism and Inclusion Alliance, is pretty significant as a community college to have your level of contribution in a forum like that. The fact that we can bring together administrators and faculty and a trustee to co-facilitate that venue is really significant for us and, and quite frankly, pretty unusual. So I'm really thrilled and I hope it really resonates. I know there's a lot of information, there's a lot of detail, but, but this is our work, if you will. And there is a great deal to be proud of. So I just wanted to, to give note to that. You know, we can sort of work down the line and, and even offline around what else we might want to talk more about. What are the other operational and programmatic detail? What are the other stakeholders want to hear from? I can certainly work offline on, on building that. I think also, as was presented during the Student Affairs piece, enrollment is such a complex consideration for us. As we think about this spring ahead and some of the rough water, we're down with three weeks before the start of the semester, we're down about 25% heading into spring semester. That's a big number for us, coming off of a big number this past fall. And I, I hope at least you feel like coming away from this, the college is turning over every stone. We are truly looking and we're asking ourselves the hard question, including in particular for our students of color who are sitting on the sidelines, like we see with a lot of the sort of COVID world around us, just trying to cope and contend with all these things. What does their work-life look like? What does childcare look like? What does housing look like? What does food look like? You know, a lot of, a lot of needs that they're contending with, which is why they've taken a break from college. And there isn't anything we could magically market or otherwise, uh, implore them to come back to college for right now. So I digress. We are hoping now, maybe as, uh, as Denise mentioned, by the end of this, we'll have some great news on that economic development bill. That would be such a, such a gift for the start of 2021. So we'll cross our fingers and toes on that and see, and see where we land. I'll dive into the two items there, you'll see. So, uh, under new hires, I won't belabor the, the full reporting, but you've got some detail. I finally get to introduce our new Vice President and CFO, Andrea Nathanson. Andrea, if you want to just give a little wave there, um, for those who have your, your, uh, sort of Brady Bunch screen up, you can see, really thrilled to have Andrea, um, at the helm as our Chief Financial Officer now. She comes from Bay State, um, with significant background over, over multiple decades in, in healthcare. And I think it's going to stand us in good stead. Um, so welcome, Andrea. You'll also see Doug Slavas, uh, on that new hire list, with this complicated title of Senior Director of Enterprise Applications. It basically means we just hired a significant person, um, under Mary Kraslowski, our, our CIO. We've hired a significant person in that world of IT. What you can imagine is very critical. It was before COVID, it certainly is now and it's going to be, uh, when we have, uh, widespread vaccination. So I'm really thrilled for Mary that she's been able to build out her team. As far as promotions, a couple to call out, Dorothy Younger, who those have known, certainly on the ways and means front, who's been holding down the fort as our assistant controller. She was promoted duly in her own right to the controller position, which she has, uh, earned and, and we're thrilled about that. But also, uh, Dr. Kyoto Woods Garcia. Kyoto's been with us for a long time in our advising center and has now truly earned and, um, is inhabing that role of Assistant Dean of Student Initiatives. So a couple of hires and promotions to note. There's not any retirements to report. There are a few part-time, uh, um, positions that you'll see on there. And you know, a small, a small note of, um, of, uh, of difficulty. You'll see that we did have, uh, one of our English professors, Daniel Emerson, who had untimely passing. There was a, a small note sent out to campus upon that. Our hearts go out. I spoke with both his brother and his mother, uh, about all that. Professor Emerson was full-time with us for fifteen years and I know that he, he, uh, left a, a really important mark in that department and, um, and he will be missed. So those are the, um, the perspectives on personnel. I'm happy to pause there and see if there's any, any questions from the committee. Okay, in brief, what you'll also see is a motion. Uh, the, the synopsis of this is, uh, Nursing Professor Tara Prizbilowicz had been approved for a sabbatical given COVID. You'll see some of the background where essentially, to her credit, she sort of stayed, stayed in the mix and gave her service still to the college. So this is essentially a renewal of sorts, but essentially giving her that chance to have that sabbatical for spring semester. So you'll see that that's, um, the motion in front of you for, for your consideration.
Cook, do you want us to read the motion and, uh, discuss or?
That'd be happy if, if, if the chair would, would call for it. If there's a second, then certainly you can have any discussion and then, then that helps give you a chance to move it forward.
Okay, um, do we have a call for motion number 2021-07?
I move that we, uh, the Springfield Technical Community College Board of Trustees Committee on Internal and External Relations recommend to the Board of Trustees the approval of an extension of sabbatical period for Teresa Prizbilowicz, a professor of nursing until the end of spring 2021 term, contingent upon the Senate budget for Springfield Technical Community College.
Okay, any discussion?
Think you need a second first.
Oh, sorry, excuse me. Yes, I did that backwards. I will second the motion. Now for discussion. Um, I would just say, I, I think I remember when I first came on the board, we voted on this. And was that in internal, external then, or was it at the general board, board meeting?
Yeah, our timing is not always, uh, we, obviously we like to work things through our committee structures. I think there's been times where some of the sabbaticals or even tenure and promotion, we can't always get to the committee. So sometimes it has gone directly in front of the full board.
Okay.
I think, I, I think I, I know Teresa, but, uh, from, uh, I think, I think it went internal, external then on to the board, the full boards. In reading this, all I could think of was there's COVID again.
Okay, and so voting tonight, this is the vote here, not to move it toward, for the general board.
No, it is. It's, it's the vote to move it in front of the full board, which would take it up at the end of the month.
Okay, perfect, okay. So, um, being at its second, can we take a roll call for a vote?
Yes. Um, Janay McDonald?
Yes.
Mary Kate Muren? Mary Kate?
She stepped off.
Okay, um, Steve Grande?
Yes.
Bill Johnson?
Yes.
Betty Spocito, thank you. Betty Spocito and Alexander Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion has passed. Any old business? No? Okay, do we need a motion to conclude the meeting?
You do. And Nanette will call the roll on that, too.
So motion to end the meeting?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Um, Janay McDonald?
Yes.
Mary Kate? Steve Grande?
Yes.
Bill Johnson?
Yes.
Betty Spocito?
Yes.
And Alexander Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Thanks, everybody. Have a great, great evening. Happy New Year again.
Thank you, everyone. Take care.